Good evening, everybody. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. Welcome. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right. So tonight, we don't have any presentations and discussions.
Sorry, I'm just gonna say there's nothing interesting.
So comments from the public? All right. Well, moving on to discussions and votes to be taken. The calendar.
The calendar. I'm very proud to point out that this is only draft two.
The power of a survey.
Compared to other years. The biggest difference between this and the first draft, I think I've pointed out, is that we start with four pre-service and draft one had three with one at the end. And the problem with that is that it's a negotiations piece. And so we really can't go down that road unless it were to be changed through negotiations. But I think, you know, we've put it back out to staff. I don't think we've had a lot of reactions and principals, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that there was one person, Peter, that you shared with me that preferred draft two to draft one because of that day at the end of the year. But did you get much more input?
He told everyone to go to the survey and share it there.
That's great. Thank you.
So I think, you know, we would present that to you. We will have some people who are concerned with the length of Christmas vacation. It's the year, whenever Christmas is like that, it's a shorter time period. The good news is that without snow days, we end June 19th.
Oh, 20s.
So, you know, that's a little bit better, but so that's all I'll say.
All right. So may I have a motion to approve the agenda, the calendar, I'm sorry? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
The approval for the FY '18 budget calendar.
Pretty straightforward. There are a couple of dates that we're still not positive about, but we've put some tentative things in there for, you know, finance committee and not quite sure about all of the ad hoc meetings. And that will come from Libby.
Any questions? May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Vote for approval for the overnight field trip for NHS National Honor Society to Holy Cross.
Can I just ask a question before we have to vote?
Sure.
I'm just wondering, and maybe this is something through you Jen, to Dr. Bucky. I seem to think, remember, that we had some sort of either informal policy about requiring same-sex chaperones for an overnight.
Overnight trip.
And I just wonder, I'm looking at this and I'm assuming Ms. Gross is the chaperone and it's marked that there's two male students. So I'm just wondering if, do we have a policy or what's been past practice of having male and female chaperones?
Never known it to be an issue. It's never been raised.
Okay.
We do not have a policy that speaks to that. I think it's, it might concern me more not on this particular trip because you have so few students and you would hope and expect that they're the cream of the crop. But if you were, if you had, you know, 25 students and then maybe it becomes a little bit more problematic, but we've never required that, to my knowledge. And John, you go back and, and Dr. Lepre, you go back further than I do, so.
I don't remember anything, but I think a female chaperone with two male students is certainly reasonable to me.
So I would only ask a question, would we feel the same if it were two or three female students with a male chaperone on an overnight?
Well, I think it's something we should look at, I think, with other districts and see if they have any policies and.
Well, I mean.
It's short notice.
Right, not for this trip, but for future trips. It is something to discuss. For future trips.
We could put it on the policy committees, you know, sort of radar.
Radar. Yeah, we can look into other districts.
Again, this is not to hold this trip up.
Yep.
It just struck me and I just thought, it's amazing I thought that.
I think we have four mothers here that could probably voice what their opinions are, but I think that, I don't know if we need to have a big policy. We just look at it and see whether it smells right.
I think what's going on in today's world, we can never be too careful. And I think it's something we should really take into consideration.
I agree.
Going forward.
We'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up, Pauline. So may I have a motion to approve the overnight trip? I know. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? May I have a motion to approve, let's see, the gift donation from the Kula Foundation, Coca-Cola, Tantucket Elementary School, in the amount of $31.06.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the gift donation from St. Paul's Church to the Nantucket Public Schools, miscellaneous school supplies?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to?
I'm gonna refuse myself.
Sure. A motion to approve the gift donation from Egan Maritime Institute to CPS School Gift Account in the amount of $9,035.20.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And may I have a motion to approve October 18th, 2016 meeting minutes?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Transfers and invoices, are there any questions? No? All right. May I have a motion to approve transfers and invoices?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Jen, I'm sorry. And this maybe is for Mike on Zona, pointed this out on the budget development calendar. It just says presented 10/18/16, but I think is today, the first day that we saw that?
No.
We saw it.
We did.
We saw it on the 18th, but we did not vote on it.
Okay, so we really were approving it.
And so what I will do now, I will, before we put it up on the website, I will say approved 11/1/16.
Okay.
But that was the date.
And the budget directives will go to the, did we do those already?
We've done those already and I think they're already up.
I think they may be, yeah. Okay.
No, because we adopted by November 1st, did we did adopt them already?
The directives? Yep.
Okay. And the approval of the revised budget calendar, didn't we just do that today?
We did.
Okay. So that date is.
It's ahead, it's actually ahead of that, I think.
It said November 1st, didn't it?
The timeline says by October 18th, it's April 1st, that's all.
Okay.
That was the final one.
Superintendent's report?
Well, enrollment is, I think, one more than it was last month. And of course, that doesn't always show the in and out, the number of kids who left and the number of kids who came in, which is considerably more than that. But I think, I won't speak for the administrative team, I'll speak for myself, it's nice that that number isn't increasing exponentially each time because it's allowed us to sort of get our feet under us with respect to enrollment.
And I'm sure you have that information, Mr. Cozer, but would it be possible to have a footnote to that effect? Two in, three out, the two in are due to so-and-so, the three out were due to transfers to a new school district. I mean, it just would be good information to have.
Sure. Something we could do.
That's a great idea, especially, you know, when you get up to 11th and 12th grade, you always wonder, you know, the difference in, in the numbers, I think.
And we'll just do that in the last month period, right?
Yeah. I think as anecdotal, you know, we don't want to certainly call out anyone's personal likes.
Right.
Gracias.
Bless you. So that's, that's pretty much the enrollment that we're looking at. The annual report, this is something that I send to town. It's something that every administrator and department head contributes and it's reflective of last school year. So just to offer it to you, this is what you will see at town meeting in April. And just want to thank the administrative team. I think this is maybe the earliest that we have submitted it. It's usually in by December, yeah, or, you know, they like it in before Christmas and so we have it early.
Well, bravo to everyone. I think this is a really nice snapshot of what was a very full year.
Absolutely.
And it's nice and I think the nicest piece may be that the, our latest MCAT scores are right there and so people can see the growth that our students made and so.
Very good.
And then finally, on the horizon is, you know, we're in pretty good shape. We begin November 15th with our budget development pieces. We'll have the federal grants for you as we do each year and Martin will provide what we refer to as the preliminary budget forecast, which is as of today, what's it going to cost us in, in those dollars? And so that accounts for collective bargaining agreements and all of that.
And we don't have a sense from the town yet on that appropriation?
No, we don't. And, you know, subsequent to this, the November 15th, as we start rolling out in December, we'll give you the tech facilities and community school first and then the budget at each school. We know that facilities will have increases because we have a new building online. So there are operating costs, you know, oil and propane and electricity and, and there will also be staffing costs in the facilities in particular. So we know that that's going to be a pretty good figure this year and the other thing I missed and I wanted to make reference, John has invited the Adams recipients to our next meeting. And that's always kind of nice to meet those kids and I think typically, John, you ask them what they're thinking about doing next year. Some of them know exactly and some are still developing that.
Mike, I'm sorry, you and Martin have had, started to have conversations about sort of ballpark estimates though for the, those costs.
Yes.
So the town finance director is taking into consideration and Libby?
They don't know what that is yet. When we release our projection, they will know that we are, typically our roll forward is anywhere from $450,000 to $600,000.
Just to meet.
Just to meet what we have this year. So there's, that's an estimate. And then if we're adding what in facilities and what in staffing and what in staffing at the intermediate school, will it total a million or a million five? And then we find, start to find out what we're going to get from the town. But I think you all know that at other earlier finance committee meetings, we've sort of told them that this will be a big year as we put in a new building online.
No, I think the process has been really transparent. I was just curious if the actual negotiation of the numbers has been loosely bantered about.
No, I haven't heard a word. There was some discussion from somebody in town who asked me to tentatively put on Sparks Road improvements on the December 6th meeting. And I have to check my notes and see if that was Mike Burns? Do I mean Mike Burns?
Yeah.
Yeah. But there's, there, that's getting more conversation as the hospital starts to get underway and so I have a question mark by that. I'm not really sure that that will be on that agenda, but it's possible.
Lusting after a roundabout.
Can't take down that tree.
They have a plan that wouldn't take the tree down.
That's good.
But.
But wouldn't include a roundabout.
Around the tree.
Not around the tree, you know.
Through the tree.
Like the redwoods.
But they need, are okay because it's our land that would be involved.
I think, you know, while Mike is here, it wouldn't be bad for us to understand their plans for the Bartlett Road also because that traffic is, despite our, our best efforts to accommodate, is still terrible. So while we might ask him if he's coming and be prepared to talk about vote.
Actually, while you just mentioned it, may I just, and maybe this should have just been a phone call or an email, but driving down towards Surfside the other day as school was getting out, the elementary school, I think it's where the pass, the separate crossing used to be, it's now whitened out, but there's a gap in between the work, the area, and children were coming through there and just crossing the street, which was only a couple of hundred yards down from the crossing guard at Bartlett Road. But I stopped and then a little kiddo just ran just because her family, and I meant to that day and I didn't because I got sidetracked. As you're mentioning that, I'm sure you're aware of it and I don't know if there's a way that we can make sure it's, it's cornered off, but it was very worrying driving, you know, as I said, towards Surfside Beach with these kids coming out, not at an exit.
And along those lines, the First Way and the development of a continuing the sidewalk or bike path because kids are forced to walk in the road and it's very dangerous because now that has become a very busy thoroughway, so.
If you could come armed to.
Well, yeah, and I, my understanding is the plan is to pave First Way, the dirt part of First Way, this spring and do the sidewalk. That was the plan. Now, DPW right now is, is sort of in flux and so I don't know if that is still going to be the plan, but I know that that was scheduled to happen this spring and we would all welcome, well, I won't say we will all welcome it, but I think the school personnel would welcome that sidewalk and the paving there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think the conversations included speed tables.
Well, we have a table now there, which has helped.
Slows people down.
Yeah. I mean, you can't hit that, you can't hit that fast.
It's like a speed hunk.
Honestly, the dirt road slows people down because the potholes are so bad, people are forced to drive slowly.
That's the argument in favor of not paving.
The big concern is the continuation of the sidewalk though, because despite how fast or slow, the children are still walking in the road.
And now the kids who are walking, the bikers, I know a lot of middle school and high schoolers, they go around, they go in front of the cars and then they just keep stopping. And so it's, it's not.
It's a dangerous situation. It is. Thank you. All right, are you all set?
I am.
Okay. Subcommittee work, anybody to report? No? All right. You're up.
We just have to, we're still trying to figure out like the spot where which form was going to be. I'm trying, I'm trying to talk to people, they're not responding to me, so I have to talk to them again.
You're not talking about Dr. Bucky not responding?
No.
Oh, okay. Just wanted to be clear.
She did look in his direction.
He was smiling, so I didn't think it was. And. I'm sorry, Sarah, you're looking for a venue to host a winter forum? Yeah, I'm trying to contact the people who run that and they're not really responding to me, so I have to get them again. And then we're just planning our next student council meeting, dodgeball tournament to include faculty, if any of you guys want to join.
Ouch.
So, yeah, but that's, but we're kind of doing it right now.
Great.
Great.
Thank you. Can you report on any of the Red Week events?
Well, the high school's not doing Red Ribbon Week.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know why.
We participated in some of the forums, we just didn't do an assembly.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Middle school had the improv and.
Right.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We didn't do an assembly this year.
You didn't do an assembly, okay.
I think the middle school, middle school's doing, because I saw the red ribbons on the trees.
Okay.
Yeah, we had a bunch of high, or maybe it was middle school students coming around town and posting red ribbons throughout town. So they asked in front of visitor services if they could put one out.
Did you say yes?
No, I said no. Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just have a couple of.
Sure, comments?
Comments, if I may. I had talked to Peter Cohen about this and I just wonder through you Jen, if we could ask Peter to perhaps come to maybe the next school committee meeting or when he thinks it would be appropriate to give us an update on the project-based learning class.
Mm-hmm.
We saw the presentation early before school, but I know they've been in process and I'd love to hear what's going on and the enrollment and how that's been working.
Fantastic.
If that'd be all right.
That sounds great. Thank you.
So I'll let Peter work with Mike as, that might be a good time. And then I just, I have a question and for disclosure, I have my second child as a senior this year, so this is much more in my face, but, and I say that in a nice way. Nice as well. But, nice as well, lovely senior here. Credit for Life is coming with Cape Cod Five next week and that is always.
This week, actually.
This week.
Oh, and that's always one of my favorite activities and I think it's a great thing that we do to help prepare our students for life after school. But I'm wondering, I know colleges are coming and doing their college visits, but do we ever do anything about presenting to the kids options for bridge years or gap years? And also, do we do any financial support or education for students who are going straight into the workforce? I happen to have two mid-30-year-old women working at my office and we've been talking about their senior year and their college years and it's very interesting talking to people in their mid-30s who if they could have done things differently, they're sharing what they would have done. Both grad, actually, I'm sorry, one graduate from Nantucket, one from Connecticut, but I just, I think that certainly for basic financial understanding, I know my daughter and son probably still don't know how to, you know, budget and balance a checkbook. And if we've got students going straight out into the workforce, do we do any, any education around credit cards and what they're, you know, what they should and shouldn't be doing? And I don't know if that's us or whether we go to the friends and ask for somebody to come in and help, but I would love to see a presentation for our school, especially with our president and first lady having their daughter going off. I think Harvard requires every student to have a gap year or a bridge year. Would love to see us doing something, having that conversation if we're not already.
So I'll address part of that and John can step in and maybe address some more. We do offer a financial literacy course. It is not required and that is something that I would like to see required, half, probably a half credit, you know, a semester course. And while I think most people would agree with that, you still have to figure out, okay, we're going to have to add staff to be able to make that a required course. So that's one piece. I know that we have had, when the students, the last year's seniors come back and present, it's usually around Christmas. They have a group of probably a dozen kids and I think that they've had a student with a gap year present along with the others. And so I'll, at this point, I'll sort of turn that over to John. I don't know what other sorts of things have been done about gap years.
You know, when the guidance counselors go in and Sierra, correct me if I'm wrong, they mention gap year programs to students as an option for post-secondary planning. It's not solely focused on preparing for college or university. They talk about military options, going into work. I don't know of any programs that provide financial assistance for students transitioning right into the workforce, but all of the seniors participate in Credit for Life Fair, whether they're in the financial literacy course or not. So they'll have that opportunity on Thursday this week. I'm with Mike, I would like to see the financial literacy course be a graduation requirement and there's talk among other departments about what might pair off nicely with the half-year course. Since if we're going to require a half-year course, there should be something on the other side, like writing seminar and helping P E R for freshmen.
Wouldn't necessarily be a senior class, it could be something.
A graduation requirement.
Just, yeah. Because I think with that financial class, it's been very difficult. I think both my kids tried to get into it, but their schedule just didn't work.
I would say two things. First of all, that's another thing that probably should be talked about at the policy level. It's not simply a decision that John would make for his school. I think it's, it's well within the parameters of the school committee to say, this is our expectation. Then the implementation, that you can't do something like that immediately. You know, it has to be with the incoming freshman or the incoming sophomores to be able to accomplish it. The other thing I would say is that you don't want to do, you don't want to offer that course too early though. Kids have to be a junior or a senior to start to understand that it's important and I don't think a freshman or sophomore year is an appropriate time for that. And those junior and senior years are jam-packed.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
You know, for our kids. So that's one of the, the practical problems to, to doing it. Doesn't mean you shouldn't, just means that the logistics are, have to be planned.
I just wanted to piggyback, so I think on the third point you made, Pauline, which is the vocational options and maybe even beyond financial literacy for what it means to transition from high school to a job would be, you know, what kinds of job options are there for you? And I had had some conversations with people who have some really interesting perspectives and almost internship opportunities for high school students to transition into the workforce, who could, after a certain amount of time, actually be able to get college credit or get stipends to go to college if that was something, a path they wanted to pursue. But I'm thinking like a vocational fair for kids who really aren't seeing themselves going on to a two or four-year college. And we certainly have a lot of, a lot more students now where that, I don't know what that could look like, but there have been a few people who have approached me about being interested and talking to students who are interested in that.
It could be interesting, I think, to put something like that together closer to, well, maybe this time of year, for students who are undecided. I, again, because I had a student in the class of 2015, I remember there was 25% of that class that, when it goes in the paper, had undecided or would not travel necessarily to college as the next step. And I know I had several people comment from the community, because that seemed an alarming number, a high number for a school, and was asked at the time, what are we doing to help provide or prepare those students? Now, some of those students were traveling, some of them were on a bridge program, some of them were going into the workforce, but I just.
I think, not to belabor the, the point, but I think that you're right, there are many different reasons and I think we need to get rid of the stigma of you're not going to college, quite frankly. And I think that, and Nantucket's no better place, if you go into the trades in, in Nantucket, you can do very well. And, and so I think that that stigma piece for me is larger and I think that goes in cycles. What was it, six years ago, eight years ago? Everybody has to go to college. The push was tremendous, not from high schools, but from, you know, the, the university systems. And now that has sort of cycled back to, well, wait a minute, you know, college isn't the best move for everybody.
And sometimes putting it off for a few years is better for a lot of.
Sometimes.
Or some colleges actually prefer you to come in with some life experience.
Yep.
I think just making sure the students know that there are options. And I don't think to discourage or encourage either way or call it a stigmatism, because there are other factors. You know, I've run into a situation even right here on Nantucket where kids were discouraged to go to college and they went to college and they did very, very well. So I think we just have to be really careful and get all the options out there.
Absolutely.
Make sure they have the option, educate them and help them in whatever they decide to do.
Yeah, absolutely.
I know from a high school's perspective, a lot of my friends who are preferred, like they're in auto or like stuff like that, that they're really interested in just like going into the workforce and they don't really know how to do it or where to do it, but they have like school to career where they go and work with them. And that's kind of like the jumpstart they get for the career of their choice. And I know on a personal level, like I had some family members who didn't want to go to college and then they figured out that this is not for me, I'd rather go to tech school. And I know that guidance has been doing an awesome job in saying, you can totally take a gap year, you can go to tech school, you can go straight into the workforce and it's totally fine. They were, I felt like when they came into my class, they were pushing that way more than college, which is really nice to see, because I do know that college in my grade right now is a huge stigma. And they're saying, oh, oh, you haven't applied for early action? Oh. It's just like that big push, like it's just...
It's, I think Zona's right though, there's a balance.
Yeah.
And you have to, you know, every child and every family situation is different, so.
How many of the Volk Techies, the state Volk Techies do it? The state, I mean, the Volk Tech schools. I mean, they have a college component, but how do they handle their Volk Techy kids? The auto kids?
There's a couple of colleges that are coming that are tech schools that have been here. Newland Tech and Ben Franklin Institute.
But I wonder if, do they set up like job fairs for the kids?
I don't know.
Interesting.
Thank you. That's good conversation.
So do you think a career fair of some sort before the end of this school year would be something that would be doable? Or is that something that we could look to the friends to help organize or is that...
I'm going to look to Mike to channel where this would come from.
I don't know. I think John would have to talk to the guidance department probably and, and see what is possible.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. I just want to announce tomorrow, Zona and I leave for the mask conference, which I'm very excited to attend. I'm excited. There, there are lots of good workshops and, exactly. There's been a lot of conversation about social and emotional development and how it connects to student achievement, which I think will be really interesting.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I'm excited to come back and report.
And if I could just add, not many people know this, but this will be Lindsay's last meeting representing the I M M here. And I, I want to thank her for her coverage of us. It's been wonderful. And she is, she will be sorely missed. However, we will see her. We will see her.
Oh, good.
Thank you, Lindsay. Thank you. Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thirty-five, sir.
I know, I was close.